I am going to call the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Today is Wednesday, December 18th, December 8th. I'm just pushing the season a little. So I'm calling the meeting to order. At this point, I need to appoint a process observer. I don't like to appoint. I like to ask for a volunteer.
I volunteer.
You're volunteering? Tom Solan is volunteering. Thank you. Are there any agenda adjustments? Oh, actually, hold on one second. I'm just going to go around the table and make introductions because I do that. All the way over there is Amanda Zeller. She's our assistant principal, not vice principal. That's old fashioned language. Assistant principal of the high school. Kate Stoll is a board, school board member. Patrick West is the principal of the middle school. Beth Williams is a school board member. Tom Solan is vice chair. I'm Holly Drola Babcock, chair. Andy Corey is our superintendent of schools. Gina Burksgov, who I never say her name right at all, is our assistant superintendent, responsible for curriculum and instruction. Linda Sherwood is our assistant business administrator. We have Krista Whalen all the way over there is also a school board member. And at the very end is Tim Grison, principal of the high school. So that way everyone in the public knows who we are. At this point, I do, I'm asking for agenda adjustments. Do we have any?
I do not, but I do have a, well, I'll say an extended correspondence.
Okay, great. And is there anyone else with agenda adjustments from the board? Okay, so moving forward, we're going to do nominations, resignations, and correspondence. You can do them in whatever order you'd like.
Okay. I hand out to the board a couple pieces of information that I walked in. One of them is from Kelly Sealy and Lance Finnamore, our facilities director, which provides you a summary of our equipment age at the high school with regard to ventilations and the systems. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that when I get down to the facilities piece, which is already on our agenda. The second piece is a job description. As you know, we are looking at a, a New Hampshire certified social worker or school counselor in this year's budget. So we wanted to provide the board a job description of what that would look like. And we can talk a little bit further about that when we go through the fiscal year '23 budget. And then the last piece of information, I just want to spend a couple minutes on and kind of give this board and the community an update regarding COVID. In your packet, I provided you with some information. Basically, on a daily, every other day basis, I monitor COVID cases for the two communities, Hollis and Brookline. And I wanted to just discuss a little bit that from November 11th through November 24th, we saw a significant uptick in both communities. As a result of our contract, contact tracing, we were able to identify the most likely cause of that uptick. And not surprisingly, it was related to Halloween events. That November 11th date is 11 days after Halloween. There was a lot of socialization between our students and communities, and we saw kind of an explosion. So I provided you basically from September 8th through today with the uptick as well as the other readings, so you can have a comparison. And we typically run about, you know, most of the time, 20 to 30 cases. We were doing very well at the beginning of the year. Our numbers were very low. We got through a tremendous fall athletic season with very few cases. And then things were going along really well. And then on the morning of November 11th, we saw a slight uptick. It was for the first time, we went over 40 cases between the two communities. The next day, the 12th, we went from 41 to 72 cases. Now, that isn't just for the school system. That's all the cases in the two communities. And we basically stayed at that peak for about two weeks, which is basically the standard course when you are going to see a peak, to come down off that peak. And then on November 29th, we quickly went from the 24th of November, right before Thanksgiving, 66 cases, back down to November 29th, back to what I'll call more of our normal numbers that we had been seeing of 33 total cases between the two communities. We are presently, I think it's again 11 or 12 days around from Thanksgiving. So this morning, I saw a little bit of uptick because we went 17 in Brookline and 21 in Hollis for a total of 38. The next couple of days will give me an idea if we're going to see that type of significant uptick because again of the social situation. I also wanted to provide you with the vaccination rates. In October, November, pretty much through the month, Brookline was at 60.5 with one dose and 52, 54.2 fully vaccinated. And Hollis was at 71.8 with one dose and 65.4 fully vaccinated. As of this morning, both communities have seen some growth with the vaccination rates. Brookline is at 61.7 with one dose and 54.6 fully vaccinated. Hollis is at 73.7 with one dose and 66.2 fully vaccinated.
Where is that data coming from?
This is all from WMUR, and it's published on a daily basis.
But do you know, is this self-reporting or?
My understanding comes from DHHS.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I think right now, I would tell you that the elementary schools are seeing students take advantage of the vaccination for those families that want the vaccination. So I think you'll see those numbers continue to grow. When you factor in over the life of the virus, we're probably around 10% in each community that would have some natural immunities from having the disease. So that 71 could be 81, and that 60 could be 70 if you look at the infections. Again, the Halloween event triggered an outbreak at one of our elementary schools in Brookline. We saw a rapid rise of students. And what we also saw, which sometimes people forget, is when you see a rapid rise at the, an upper elementary school, there's a significant chance there's either going to be older siblings or younger siblings, depending on where that family is. And that's what we also saw. So when we get a little further along and I talk about the numbers, there's a direct relationship between that outbreak and cases that we saw with high school siblings or siblings at RMMS. The vaccinations are not something that we are taking a stance on. We are providing information through our nurses of any vaccination clinics that are upcoming. There will be one the 18th, Saturday the 18th, in Brookline. So that has been publicized in our newsletter, and that word is out. And we continue to work with families who are looking either for a vaccination or a testing site. One of the pieces that we are adding to our repertoire, beginning probably late next week, we will have test kits available through the school. So if you were to call in or the nurse calls you and say, "We have concerns about Andy's symptoms," would you like, when you pick them up, we can provide you a test kit? We go up Tuesday to the state to pick those up, and those will be in the schools. And they'll go as long as they have the tested kits. Many of you know that families also had the opportunity to send in for a test kit. Many of our families took that as a, as a welcome relief and have those in their homes as well. In terms of how the schools have been impacted, on the final page, I provided you a grid that shows you the numbers by the schools. I just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the elementary schools, but I just want to call your attention to CSDA and 39 cases in November. That was the catalyst. That was the school. And we saw numbers from siblings that were at the high school level, and we saw siblings at the primary school level. And many times, folks should understand, if they get a notice and there's a, there was a case at HBS, a case at Hughes, and a case at the high school, some people look at that as three cases, which it is. But from my vantage point, I'm the only one that may know it was simply one family with three siblings. So again, the, the number of cases doesn't always drive a decision. It's kind of what's going on in our schools. And I have to compliment our nursing staff because they're doing an outstanding job. And they're the point people to the Department of Health and Human Services around contact tracing and getting the guidance for the steps we should take. You know, when we had the outbreak at CSDA, we closed for an extra day, which gave us five days. And five days is a number that really gives you an opportunity to allow students to stop the spread. So if we had to, because of an outbreak somewhere, tack a day on somewhere here or there, we could do that. We don't necessarily have to do it as a remote day. We can just do it as a day. We far exceed the number of required hours as a school district for our students. So we're trying to balance what could be snow days, what could be a need for remote days, because they are very limited to five according to the state. And that means if we use two of them as remote snow days to not make those days up, we would be down to basically what I would call three potentially COVID days. So we're really trying to balance that and look at the numbers. Focusing in on the middle school and the high school, right now, the middle school, since the beginning of the year, which is about three and a half months, has had a total of 19 cases. A portion of those cases are adults. So they're not always cases for students, but we do not release adult versus student because again, it's a medical condition. It's not something for me to release to the community because in many instances, with a little finagling, you could figure out who that staff member may be, and that's not fair to the staff. So there are 19 total cases at the high school. There are 35 total cases. Again, a portion of those are also staff related, as are the numbers for HBS, Hughes, RMMS, and CSDA. In terms of total numbers, we've had 121 students out of 146 cases for student cases across the SAU. I wanted to put that into some context because we presently have 2,410 students in our district. We have 833 students at the high school and 367 students at the middle school. Our total staff is 552. And that's our bus drivers, our coaches, our food service, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our regular daily substitutes, and our professional staff. So there are approximately every day, 3,000 people that come on campus that we monitor and work with if we have a suspicion that they have a COVID symptoms or concern. So when I look at the total cases across the SAU staff for students, I come out with just over 4% of that 121 students. So that's 96% of our students have done an exceptional job. And there's the discrepancy also because I'm often in the high school. This week, I was fortunate enough, I got to spend some quality time working with the students on We the People, and I took advantage of that to visit many classrooms. And again, we have a significant number of students who choose to wear masks. We have utilized both the cafeteria and the gymnasium. So there is social distancing for those students who are looking for it at lunch. Our classrooms are still socially distanced. It's three feet, and our staff is doing a great job. We have a number of students who are choosing to wear masks and a number of students who are opting not to. All students are doing their best, adhering to required transportation and masks. But they're also students, and they tend to misplace a mask. It's six hours. That's a long day for me to remember something. But we have plenty of masks for them when they board the buses. In terms of the, the high school, we took the high school number of cases and divided by the total population of 833 students. So we've had about a little over 3%, 3.3% of students with an infection. If I look at that high school in terms of the co-op district, which is 1,200 students, it's 2%. And if I look at it across the SAU, it's 1.16%. In terms of the middle school, again, when I look at it just versus its 367 students, I come out with 2.72% for an infection rate. If I look at them compared to the co-op, they're three quarters of 1%. And if I look at them for the SAU, they're 0.37. Because when we send our notices out, we send it out for all the cases we have. We don't just send Brookline cases to Brookline or Hollis cases to Hollis. We've always adopted that. One of the things that we've also done is we crafted a uniformed email that goes out to any family whose child needs to monitor their symptoms. They were close contact. We went to that format, which is a little less impersonal. We had been calling everybody, but when we went through the spike at CSDA, we learned that we were not faster than social media. And Andy Corey may put on that their child was diagnosed with COVID, and Gina realized that our children play together all the time and wasn't getting any notification from us until hours later in the evening. So that's why we moved to a little more impersonal format, but at least we know it's a uniform message and everybody's getting it at the same time. We have really benefited, benefited from the extra nurse that we added pre-COVID. That has allowed us to basically maintain our services every day. There are very few times this year where we have not had our nurse in the building. And when we look at the decision between masks and mask optional, we look at it based on the district. So we'll continue to monitor that, monitor that data. I have informed both elementary boards that if vaccinations continue, and what I mean by that, meaning that folks are able to get dates to be vaccinated, because that's the biggest piece of the formula. It all went well on that front. That would most likely be moving to mask optional at our elementary districts on the Tuesday after Martin Luther King weekend. If we see an uptick from Thanksgiving, it'll be the second uptick around the holiday. So there would be a strong likelihood that I may go masks at the co-op or we'd return from the winter break for the two, two weeks leading up to Martin Luther King. And then everybody would move to mask optional, again, provided the numbers stay the same or go down. We have a new variant that is out there that we're still waiting for. We don't have any cases, to my knowledge, in New Hampshire yet at this time, but we will continue to monitor that. And I have a, some community members who are in the medical profession, who regularly contact me and have discussions. This is not an area that I pretend to be an expert, but I at no point would hesitate to go into masks if I felt there was a value. I do look at our environment, and I'll use the high school as an example. It's, it's almost like, in some ways, we have created a bubble. Because when you're in the high school and you spend a day, you realize that although there are 833 kids, they travel in the same packs. They're in with the same classes, in with the same students, and their day doesn't have a lot of flexibility. You know, the biggest flexibility a student has is maybe to get some tutoring at cab block or where they're going to sit that particular day at lunch. But if you know anything about high school students, they very seldom change their table at lunch. They basically establish it when they're a freshman, and that's where they'll be unless they're lucky to have early release and can go home. So I know people in the community are concerned with the rise in cases, and I understand that. But in terms of Hollis and Brookline, our numbers are maintaining pretty good stability. We're back in the range where I had a comfort level, and I'm hoping not to see another spike, but I would not be shocked if I did as a result of the travel from Thanksgiving. And I'll try to answer any questions. I've answered it just so the board knows, any parents who have called or emailed me or wanted to meet, I've met with them personally. And I think I've gave them a greater comfort level because as somebody who's sending the emails all the time, it's like any email. When you're the receiver, you may not read it the same way as it was intended when it was sent.
My only question is, I just, just verifying that these tests, you're giving the tests to the parents for them to administer. We're not administering them in the schools?
We are not. And it'll be, I will call Krista Whalen's house as the nurse, say, "One of your children has symptoms. Would you like me to give them a test to bring home?" And that parent could just refuse the test, and it will stay on the shelf for the next person, or that test will go home. What we would ask you to do is perform the test. And then what we're doing with any at-home test is just take a picture with your phone and send it to the school nurse.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for going into that detail. And I think it's helpful for the public to see that you probably are doing this pretty regularly, looking at these numbers a lot, I'm sure. Okay. Any other pieces of correspondence, nominations, resignations? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. No other questions? All right. So at this point, we're going to move to approval of the minutes. I think we have one set of minutes to approve from.
We actually have non-public ones. She didn't circulate them, but they were sent out at the same time earlier.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to, we're going to, I don't have that on here, so I don't want to, were they circulated?
They were sent out at the exact same time.
Were they?
Yeah, because I looked and.
So do you want to just try?
They say.
They don't say much. So should we just approve them? Were they from November 17th as well?
Same date, yeah.
Okay, so, and you don't think there were any amendments or anything to them? So let's try to approve those as well. All right. So first, we'll do the, the public minutes of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board, November 17th, with the following amendments. Page six, line 39, replace "fund" with "fun." Really? Page nine, line 34, replace "sand" with "and." And page 11, line 34, replace "if" with "is." So I need a motion to accept by Beth, and I need a second by Tom. Are there any other comments?
There is one, and I, I want to bring it up. On page three, line 17, and this is unfortunately my doing. I had sent a hard copy of what you read to.
Yeah. I think I sent it, yeah, right.
Maybe both of it. It still had this in it. Is that, is that not true? This has been done?
Yeah, no, it shouldn't have that. So we, I didn't read that.
Okay.
So remove "this has been done."
Correct.
Okay. So page three, line 17, remove "this has been done." Can we make that a, do we have to do a whole amendment thing, or can we just?
Does anyone have an objections to adding that to the amendments that are being considered in the vote?
No. Okay. So all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay. What?
Non-public.
Non-public?
The non-public minutes.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yes. Now I'd like to make, I need a motion to approve the non-public minutes of the Hollis Brookline School Board from November 17th, 2021. Moved by Tom, second by Beth. So Tom and Beth, thank you. All in favor? You're abstaining? Okay. So were you not, was it there? Okay, so then it's four, zero, one. That motion passes. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Kate.
Kate took them. Okay, so at this point, at 6:22, I'm going to open the floor for public input. Seeing that there's not a lot of people here, I'm not going to read my introduction to public input, but I hope people are more and more familiar with our policy, BEDH, which is basically the policy that we have. So I'm opening the floor at 6:22 PM. Seeing none, I'm closing the floor at 6:23 PM. Wow, that changed right there. Thank you. All right. At this point, we'll move to the principal and athletic report. I think we'd have Patrick up first, right? Is that right, Patrick? Are you ready to go first?
I'm ready.
Something's going on with my computer. Okay. I have it. Thank you. Go ahead, Patrick. Thank you.
Sure. So we, a little health and wellness at the end of November. We had our first turkey trot. We ran from the middle school up to high school and back. All students that could participate did, and all staff that could participate also did. And PTSA was there to help. They gave us some prizes. We had some shirts that we gave out, and it was a really great event. But I think we're going to try and continue next year as well. Our student council has a couple of events coming up. The first one is this Friday morning. We're doing a cup of Joe on the go during drop-off. And then we're doing the Helping Hands Gift Drive again, which has mittens in the main office. Students can come and grab a mitten and give a gift, and those are due by December 17th. Just to highlight something from the athletics, which I'm sure Tim will touch on from Brian Bumpus' athletic report, is unified basketball is coming to the middle school, which just involves more students, some students that are identified. And we're going to have a basketball game, a student versus staff basketball game, I think at the end of February. We had our band concert last night, which was the first concert in a couple of years. Students did an amazing job. I got, had some really nice feedback from parents. Couple of parents expressed that they got emotional because it was just so nice to be back in person. We have our chorus concert tomorrow night. Looking forward to that. And then we have a few night games and dress-up days starting next week that go along with the SEL stuff. And we'll be doing a lot of fun games and rock.
That's awesome. Thank you, Patrick.
Of course.
Anybody have anything for Patrick?
I think it's great that you did the turkey trot, and I love the cup of Joe on the go. What a great idea.
Yep, that was student council.
That's great. And obviously, adding in unified basketball is, is huge and really important, and I love that idea. And so just to clarify, the band concert was seventh and eighth grade band together?
Yes.
And the chorus concert will be seventh and eighth grade together? So, okay.
Just doing those separate this year.
Right, yeah, no, I think that's a great plan. So that's terrific. And, and you know, usually you don't have a kid in both. I guess some people do, but they're lovely concerts. They're more fun.
They're very short but sweet.
That's good. That's great. They're lovely. That's awesome.
I was there. It was good.
Was it great? That's awesome. No, they're great. They're really great. The kids do a great job. It's a lot of fun. Okay. Anybody else? Questions for Patrick? All right. So we're up to you, Tim.
All right. I will, I'll do my report first, and then I'll do Brian's, and then we'll talk program studies. Does that make that work?
I think that sounds like a great plan.
All right. So I wanted to highlight that our performing arts department returned to the stage, live stage, just this past weekend with their performance of Clue. Those pictures were hot off the press from the cab block performance. We had the students perform a preview for their classmates during the school day, and then they had two evening shows on Friday and Saturday night. They performed in front of a live audience, 50% capacity in person. And then we also made it available for a livestream for those who chose to do it at home. So that was a great event to kind of return back to some, some sense of normalcy and offer that for the students and families and classmates as well. And I also want to highlight that Community Wellness Ambassador, the CWA. It is a group of student and staff members in the building who are looking to raise awareness on mental health and offer activities both during the school day and also provide resources for, for students within the school. So we are kicking off our Wellness Wednesdays. They have kicked off, but additional activities continue to be added week to week. We have some, I think Sam was going to highlight some, some ideas tonight, so I'll steal a little bit of the thunder. We talked about, I think there's some art activities, arts and crafts activities. There's also some more kind of physically active activities, wellness walks and yoga and some other offerings that are made available to students by choice. There's also some, they're, they're teaming up with the student council to create a bulletin board with information, resources around mental health, as well as providing similar information, bathroom stall flyers throughout the building. And again, that's teaming up with our student council. And we have upcoming, we have our winter concert coming up. I want to highlight that.
Excuse me, Tim?
Yep.
You may want to move the microphone for.
Sure. We also have our winter concert coming up on the 14th, and we have guitar night on the 17th. And as, as we approach the holiday break, last day of school is the 22nd for our students. So that, well, I know the 22nd. Moving on to athletics, and then I'll, I'll take any questions. Highlighting what Patrick already brought up, Brian did ask me to recognize senior Constance Mulligan and her role in getting unified sports down at the middle school. She's been instrumental in leading this charge. And we have several initiatives we're looking forward to introducing over the next several months. And as Patrick mentioned, organizing a staff or students game is, is part of that. Winter athletic participation numbers are on the report as well. A little below two years ago, but certainly, certainly healthy numbers, participation across the board in, in all of our offerings again. And I am open to any questions.
Any questions for Tim?
It's great. I liked the Community Wellness Institute.
Yes, yes, very, very good. Oh, and we're also doing themed dress-up days through community wellness, so.
That's great.
Oh, that's cool.
Ugly sweater days coming up.
Did you have a comment, Beth?
Yeah, I was just going to say Clue was fantastic. That was very well done, very funny. So kudos to all of it. It was a lot of, a lot of students and staff involved in that. That was great.
I also want to comment on the community wellness. I also want to comment on the community wellness and the fact that you've got this Wellness Ambassador team. I think that's great. Unfortunately, my computer's not hooked up, so I'm having a hard time watch, seeing the agenda, but I have it on my phone. But I do, I read through it yesterday, and my only comment relates to middle school sports and the fact that, you know, last year we had such a significant number because we were doing like intramural, non-competitive sports and, and. Yeah, I'm okay. I can, I can get it on my phone. So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but obviously we're back to sort of normal numbers. And it was kind of glaring because we do basketball, that like we went from having like thirty-eight to forty to thirteen, and that's because of the nature of basketball. So I was wondering if we can touch base with Brian maybe and Ally, and like I do know that in the past, there have been some intramural type offerings, like floor hockey or ultimate frisbee or things. And like it would be great. I know that's not under the athletic department, but I feel like if kids aren't participating in sports that aren't really under the athletic department, but they're still a sport and they're an intramural, it'd be nice to have those numbers too, because I'm basically on the school board because I want kids to be included in, in things. I want kids to participate in things, and I want us to provide enrichment and all sorts of opportunities for kids to be a part of their community. And so it's hard when you see that drop, like, and last year we had this intramural, and I know it's not competitive, but we had kids participating in sports during COVID, and we had significant numbers. And now you see that number. And I know we've got wrestling, which we didn't have, so the number is, it's just me commenting.
And I think it's rec sports as well, because I think some did not run last year where the intramurals offered that for students.
Right. That's true, too.
Rec sports are back on the table, so I think some of that information will be beneficial to us.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it's just, I don't want to put more work on their plate, but it's just a little like, if there's a floor hockey opportunity, I just remember, I don't know if they still do it at the middle school, but there was floor hockey years ago, and lots of kids did it, and it was just like drop in or whatever. I just, I'd love to hear some more about those kinds of things.
Would you like me to bring our clubs' numbers for next time?
I mean, that'd be good to have those kinds of pieces of information. Sure. Yeah. Be great.
We're going to be due for a review of extracurricular soon, aren't we? You know, the annual, we do the annual review of the clubs' stipend and participation levels. Would it be appropriate to roll it in with that?
Yeah, I mean, it would be. It would be good to know what we're doing in terms of participation, because we're providing our kids with lots of opportunities, and some of them take advantage of it. And some of them want to be involved and can't be because they don't have the same level of skill or talent as others, and so there's nice opportunities for them to know what else is out there and for the community to know what else we're providing. So sure, that'd be great.
I think one of the things you point out in that is, and thank you for bringing it up, because I, I didn't key in on that, but is there an opportunity? Do we have a group of kids who were presented with an opportunity that didn't otherwise exist? Maybe it's just the rec kids who didn't get to play rec came and played, but maybe it's a group of kids who are in the schools, who really like it in this different level, and gave it to them a year, gave them a taste of it, and then we, did we pull, pull it back?
Right, and it's, it's budgeting, and it's expense, and it's personnel, and it's all those things. So I, you know, I totally get it. I just, just bringing it up, because that's why I'm on a school board, to bring stuff up, so.
Sitting close to me too long?
Yeah, it's because of Tom Sol, and you can blame him. I just like to blame him for everything anyway, so.
Welcome to the club.
Great, so that said, okay.
I think you are.
All right, so moving forward and on, do you want to do program studies before Sam, or do you want Sam to go before you? If Sam is ready. Oh, and Gabby?
Hi, oh, let us introduce. This is Gabby. She's the student body vice president and eventually going to be taking my position, so she's here tonight to just see how great this is.
Welcome, Gabby.
All we have to say for tonight is that Grand Council is working on fundraiser ideas to ensure we have a nice fruitful Spirit Week, because that's where most of that money goes to. The Spirit Week date is now confirmed to be the week before February break. We're going to be filming skits again this year, and we're adding a bunch of new different stuff to freshen it up a little bit. We're changing poster ideas, we're changing dress-up days, stuff like that. Separate classes are now doing their own fundraisers. Sophomores are doing Christmas candy grams. They're going to be selling them the fourteenth and fifteenth, and then passing them out on the sixteenth. The juniors are doing a candle sale. That's all online. And Stuco's also partnering with the C W A to create a mental health board that just has resources, hotlines, information, stuff like that. And they're also going to be doing toilet talk, from which designs put up in all of the bathroom stalls. And we also just started doing a Wellness Wednesday, which offers physical activities like spikeball, going for walks, and then just mindful arts and crafts, and I think yoga is going to be offered soon, too. So lots of fun stuff.
That sounds great. Any questions for Sam?
When does that Wellness Wednesday happen? Is it during school or?
Yeah, it's during the cab block period during the day.
That's great. Awesome. Those are great ideas. You guys sound like you're very busy.
Yes.
Thank you. And also Sam is incredibly active on many committees, so thank you for your service, Sam.
Of course.
Okay. All right, Tim, I think I'm turning this over to you and Amanda. Is that what we're doing? Program studies?
Yes, so.
Or P O S?
In the packet, we provided the current program of studies in its, in its current existence, as well as a sheet including updates. And made references to the existing, existing documents. I am now going to turn it over to Amanda, who will highlight some of the changes, and then we can open the floor for discussion.
I'll start with a little quick apology that this is a rushed process this year. We kind of had a, a lot to deal with at the start of the year, and this got pushed a little bit further back than we would usually like it. So bits of it will need to be refined a little bit late in the process, more than we would like to. So I apologize for some of those things that are going to be fixed as we go or refined as we go, but we kind of crunched our timeline on this. So I apologize if any of it feels a little more muddled than it should be. The first to highlight on the document is our civics requirement. The good news is we're given a little extra time. We were ready to try and roll this out this year, but we have it in place for our two thousand and twenty-four class, and that requires them to take the U S citizenship test and achieve a seventy percent. So we've, we've gone over the parameters of that with our assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction to make sure we are approaching that correctly. And we've added wording into our grade eleven courses to show and reflect that requirement. So that wording shows up in a couple of places. It shows up in the heading under social studies in our general requirements that go by grade. It shows up in the civics course description, and then we've also made sure it's indicated in our graduation requirements, both the state level requirements and the H B graduation requirements. So that appears in several places, and we wanted to make sure we were accurate and appropriate in our wording of that. So we worked through that with Gina.
Does that, does that mean that the present freshman class will be the first class to have that requirement? Because it says it's done on grade, at grade eleven.
Right, so it's next year's?
We're class of twenty-two is our freshman, twenty-three?
No, the twenty-two's our seniors, twenty-three's juniors, twenty-four is sophomores.
Is it class of twenty-four or in two thousand and twenty-four?
Class of.
Class of twenty-four. So they have to do it next year, when they take it next year.
Okay. I thought it was in two thousand and twenty-four.
This is why we were relieved and had an extensive discussion as to when we actually needed to do this. The news we got was good. This gives us time to approach it properly, instead of throwing it into the course at the last minute. So our civics teachers were quite relieved that they had some time on this. And Gina's been working very hard with to figure out how we can do this with fidelity and to meet the requirement without reworking our entire curriculum and civics course experience, which is a really strong one at this point. The computer science and engineering, this is kind of an exciting prospect. Devin Fodo has been working hard to kind of increase his capacity and that of the engineering programming. So what he did, the first bit is just updating our computers and technology course description. That's not, he's just making sure that the technology language is up to date. As you can all tell, technology changes pretty quickly. So that update to the course description just reflects current trends in technology and how they've changed. That doesn't really change the heart of the course. It's just making sure it's up to date. The interesting shift he proposed this year is in our engineering technologies class. This was designed to be a semester class as an introductory piece to the engineering program. We have not removed that because it was very important to us to have a semester-long, easy, try-it-out, toes-in-the-water sort of engineering experience available to anyone. But he has figured a plan where we can have two semesters of that introductory-type course that are not repeating, but they are not contingent on the other. So you don't have to take semester one in order to take semester two. But you could also take a year-long course and receive Project Lead the Way credit. So it can be part of the Project Lead the Way plan if you take it as a full-year course. Or if you're not that committed at the outset, you can just try a semester. It can be first semester, it can be second semester. It doesn't matter which one. You're not excluded from second semester if you've never taken a first semester. You do have to opt into this as a dual enrollment in the fall if you want to do that kind of dual enrollment piece with it. So that is one. You kind of have to make your choice early if you want to do the Project Lead the Way credit, because you do need to be enrolled for the full year for that. But it still breaks down to let other students have an introductory experience, perhaps without that sense of pressure that you're going to take a mid-year exam and receive credit for it. So that was through Devin's work. He made sure he was certified to teach that Project Lead the Way version of the course, and then aligned it with a course we already had called Engineering Technologies. So what you'll see in your notes is the semester one course, the semester two course, and then the description as it exists for the full-year Project Lead the Way course. But they're not separate classes. They're just, they're one class that you can take in different time intervals. Does that make sense? That's a little bit of a puzzle to put together, but it's, it's a nice one, because it offers students who just are ready to jump into engineering and do, and take advantage of our dual enrollment opportunities there. It gives someone more that they can do in their program.
Does Project Lead the Way require that it be contiguous in one school year?
We're going to double check on that. I believe it does need to be, so they couldn't do semester one one year and then semester two another, or the other way around.
Or I'm thinking, yeah, or semester two, and they find they really like it and wanted to pick it up. I'm wondering if they would let them do that.
I, I, I can't see that being that flexible, since the dual enrollment is a college credit option, and usually there, it's got to be within a year. However, the other Project Lead the Way opportunities are still available. We still have several courses they can take.
Congratulate Devin and his team for putting this together. It's very proactive and insightful.
It's really neat to see how he's taken on this engineering. That wasn't, he was a mastermind teacher, and we kind of asked him to explore this engineering thing, and he jumped right in, and he's really followed it through in a way that has created some opportunities for our students that are really nice. So I was happy to see that. Our English electives. These may look new, but they're not. They're recycled old electives that we need to bring back in different formats. We're trying to increase our senior elective offerings. We have some packed senior elective classes. They're very full. And we're hoping that by bringing back world literature, we might increase opportunities for some seniors. Right now, they, they mostly fall into memoirs, film studies, and science fiction. And they're great classes. The teachers are passionate about it. The students love it. But we felt offering a world literature semester senior elective might give them a few more choices, so maybe we might have some more even numbers in our senior electives. We would like to take journalism, and it was a two-semester sequenced course, so journalism one, journalism two. You have to take journalism one to take journalism two, and instead offer a single semester of just journalism. That seemed to be most effective, according to our current journalism teacher, with what was happening in the classroom in the sequence of one and two. She seemed to think it would populate the course a little more fully, especially the journalism two numbers. Sometimes we couldn't get the kids in there because they hadn't taken journalism one, so they couldn't fill their schedule yet, and it wouldn't be certain. So this would increase the availability of journalism as just a semester course without funneling off the journalism two piece of it. So she felt that was in the best interest of having an active journalism class that could then work on CapCon and produce a good published document for us.
I, I, is the original two-semester sequence still in place as well?
No, we're, we're taking out the one and two, and it's just going to be journalism.
Is it only going to be offered one semester?
It will be offered as, if we have students.
It depends on the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it might, I don't want to say, it'll be offered if we don't have enough students, and it'll run once.
Let me just interrupt. Do you want to take questions per section, or would you rather have all the questions at the end?
You determine. What works best for you?
I think questions per section is probably the best thing. So are you finished talking about English before we start questions, or?
One more.
Okay.
We've had years where yearbook was difficult to make happen. It's not an extracurricular that students often stay committed to from the beginning of the year to the end. We have a large, happy, passionate group at the beginning, but as their year progresses, a lot of them are seniors, and they just, their, their plate fills with other things. And so by the end of the year, there are few stalwart soldiers putting together the entire yearbook. And so the advisorship got difficult to manage, and so we don't have the strength in an extracurricular. So what we'd like to do is reinstate yearbook as a full-year class. We believe this might help manage the workload more evenly so that it doesn't fall completely on an advisor to assemble most of the yearbook. And it would also be a great learning opportunity for students. The curriculum for this course, we had identified some objectives as part of our advanced media and publishing course several years ago. But the better fit for a year-long yearbook course actually comes from the yearbook companies. Right now it's Jostens, and they have a preset curriculum that highlights and connects to standards. Publishing and journalism standards are pretty matching across the board, no matter where you are. So they publish a curriculum that, that plugs directly into the yearbook that kids would be creating with their teacher. If we chose a different yearbook company, they all have a curriculum that works with the yearbook they put together that makes it not just a big project. You have learning objectives and goals along the way. So we were proposing that we take yearbook out of our extracurricular and make it an assigned teaching class for the full year, because yearbooks start at the beginning of the year and goes to the end. It'd be difficult to run it as a semester class.
Okay, so the, are you done with English now?
I am done.
So, first of all, Tom asked some questions about computer science and, and other topics. Is there, is there anyone who has questions about civics, computer science? Because we passed those already. Okay. Kate, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so then now we're up to English. Is there any questions about English?
Just the electives. We haven't done that. There, there's some English in the prerequisites, but we can do that later.
Yeah, when we get to the prerequisite section, we'll talk about that. Do you have any?
So I, go ahead, Kate. I have a question. Just would there be an option for students to take journalism both semesters?
We do have that option available for some classes in our program of studies. I don't know if we have discussed it yet. For our English, only because of the English requirements in our graduation, we have to take a closer look to make sure that didn't undermine a student earning the correct credits for graduation. But if, if it lines up, we have, we do do that for especially some of our performing arts classes and some of our visual arts classes as well. So it, it exists if it doesn't undermine the graduation requirements. We need to take a closer look to make sure that wouldn't happen by mistake. I could see it happening just because someone didn't total up everything, and a student, they thought a student was taking another elective, and instead they took journalism twice. So we would have to look into that a little more.
I'm just thinking of some of those kids who really have an interest in journalism moving on, and I understand why the numbers make it impossible sometimes to carry on the journalism, too, but we're also, I feel like, taking something away from some of those kids who could really benefit from building on their journalism skills in either two semester or a full-year class.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I have some similar concerns, mostly because I think when you're involved in the newspaper, the CapCon, that could be, I mean, this sort of like the same thing that's happening with yearbook. It's, it could be your extracurricular interest as well, and it's not anymore. It's in that class. And so if you want to be the editor of the sports part of the CapCon or whatever, you don't, you won't have that opportunity for a full year of that experience. So I, I just, I wonder how that plays itself out with the, with the publishing piece of it. That's all.
I'm wondering if we could do a mix for journalism, have the class, but then have an after-school component
or something, right.
For someone who has already taken one semester and wants to continue involvement in the CapCon?
It's just that journalism schools across the country are struggling with, you know, getting people interested in real solid journalism. And I feel pretty passionately that we need to keep kids interested in that, so, if it's possible.
Let's look into the options for that. We can certainly ask a question about whether we could make it, you can do it twice, or how we could build in an extracurricular growth opportunity for those who want to continue to work.
And the yearbook thing sounds fine. I'd love to hear more about it after a year of it and see. I'd love to hear more about it after a year of it and see what the curriculum actually is and whether it's actually media and whether they're really getting real exposure to developing media and all of that. Any other questions on that? I'm always going to have questions on English.
Sort of a general question. If it doesn't say honors or AP, do we assume in the current context it is an unwated class?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can move on, sorry, Amanda, thank you.
Our World Language is trying to emphasize a more authentic approach to language acquisition, and they're following something called the Six Core Practices, which is much more about language in context. They're using authentic resources to discuss language, grammar, and vocabulary. And we wanted the wording of the Program of Studies to reflect that. So there's a piece embedded in this description with the Global Language section that reflects this focus on the Six Core Practices and the materials that are used in the course.
Are there any questions on world languages?
Sort of a general, do we ever look at the languages we're offering and consider adding current languages?
Oh, you fascinate me because I would love for kids to learn German in my family.
Yeah.
But I think right now we struggle to balance the two that we have and to staff them. That, that is such a particular step in the.
Three.
Three, sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Matt McFarlane. My Latin program is strong, he's doing a wonderful job. So we struggle to, to balance the French and the Spanish mix a lot. Latin has a junior-senior component that kind of creates a group for it. I think it would be difficult to figure out how fourth would fit into that puzzle. But I'm always open to discussion opportunities if anyone has a, a plan in which this could be activated.
So Kate, in my experience, it can be challenging to support a full-time position for something, you know, a completely different language to someone who has that level of expertise.
It might not have enough classes.
Full employment status, yeah, to, to support that role. So I think it just comes with challenges with a school our size to go from three to four.
Sure.
This would be an opportunity to consider in, in-school, online action.
Many students who do want to pursue another language, Chinese comes to mind, do access the lax for that opportunity right now.
But if we, if we offered them the opportunity to schedule it within their day in the school, it wouldn't, it would present a different, presented in a different context and, and the burden level as far as time commitment might balance better for them.
Right, they would not be taking a language from one of our staff. They'd be taking it on their own, maybe in the media center or whatever.
Right now, that would be part of our all-credit process.
I should say, we do have a, that is a possibility at this time. A lot of times it's easier if you come in later or leave early, but based on what, what courses you want and when they're available, that is an opportunity right now.
And when you have an opening in your schedule to fit the rest of all the things we've got.
Right. Awesome, thank you, Amanda, go on, you can move on to your updated prerequisites.
There's a little section that might be a little difficult to understand called unsequenced semester-wide courses.
Oh, sorry, I actually saw that and ignored it, sorry.
Because it wasn't highlighted.
All this is, and this is actually reflected in the earlier course I described, the Engineering Technologies. We have some courses that don't, you don't have to take one to take two. Memoirs is a good example of that, that's one of our senior electives. And there are two different semesters of memoirs, but you don't have to take the first semester in order to take the second semester. So we just made sure we identified these courses in our Program of Studies and tried to, are going to try to word it a little differently so that there's no mistake that you don't have to be in one in order to sign up for two, or you don't have to take in one. And that was, this Engineering Technologies, we're talking about, Honors Literature is a senior elective, memoirs, and Popular Reading is another senior elective. Most of them were English senior electives, but we just wanted to be clear about the fact that these are two separate semesters, they're not dependent on each other, so that seniors know what they're signing up for. The updated, are there any questions about that? The language is annoying, but I didn't know how else to say it. The updated prerequisites, we're discussing our prerequisites overall and taking a look at what's effective. This is always an issue and a concern when students are trying to figure out which courses they can take, which courses they want to take, which courses, and this is our focus, which courses are they prepared adequately for? Which is the term prerequisite. What do you need to have in place in order to be successful in the next course? So English was looking at their prerequisites. And what they noticed is that we had a grade of B minus or higher in the accelerated level or the honors level or something, or AP, but we didn't delineate standard level and what that would look like in order to shift from English IX into accelerated English X. So our English department had took a look at the prerequisites and thought that the change of wording here where we included what success in English, in accelerated English X might look like for someone who took just standard-level English IX would look like. And instead of having a department chair who might not know all the students personally, he pushed it back to a teacher recommendation. So if the teacher has an English IX student who they think really was not challenged, they can recommend them for accelerated English X. This is going to be something we look at throughout the Program of Studies over the coming year to see how to make our prerequisites clear and fair. And that's an ongoing thing, we talk about that every year. And the one after it, science, kind of reflects that. Our science has an additional component that many times the math skills need to align with the science course, or the student struggles not due to a lack of scientific understanding but due to the mechanics of solving some of the equations that are involved in the science work. And physical science was finding that if a student had not been enrolled at the same time in Algebra I-A or I, or had already taken Algebra, that they were struggling with some of the calculations in physical science. So last year, I think we had to update a different math requirement for our biology classes so that students were prepared for chemistry. This year, it's kind of every year we, we realize where the alignment isn't in place. So that's the wording there. I think we'll shift the wording right here. It says completion of concurrent with at least Algebra I-A. We might make that sound a little, a little more inclusive, which is completion of concurrent with Algebra I-A or higher. Because that shows that there are several courses that fit that description.
Are there any questions on that? I think you're good, and the rest is just.
Yes, we, I think we, we did not have an upright string bass in our band. Requirements and Chaz Rogers was, he said, I'd really like to have those if they play them. So I don't want an upright bass player to feel like they're not welcome in the band. I believe that was his latest update, but he's going to take a thorough look at the instruments in his list so that everyone is welcome in the band. We need everyone who wants to play an instrument to be in the band, and he would like that as well.
Great.
Has there been any, any discussion about having honors concert band rather than just honors jazz band? Has that been brought up at all?
I have not had that discussion. Our band director has not brought it up as an opportunity. I think right now, we just want players in the band. And if that might attract them, it's worth discussing.
I know that for some, some kids who, for whom the instrument of choice was not compatible with jazz, the jazz band, they had to, had to switch in order to have that option. So having, having known Chaz in his student years and knowing his versatility, I didn't know if he might have seen that as an opportunity because he was one of the, one of the people that used to highlight that because of some of his peers when he was a student.
That's something we can discuss, I don't think.
I was just curious, I don't, I'm not trying to instigate, I was curious if the question had been raised.
Ah, but you are, kind of, that's okay, you are an instigator, we love that to you. Okay, thank you, Amanda, is there more?
No, the, the overall issues are just things that we need to look at. Nothing, nothing that we've been changing. But we did update our Latin honors language mid-year last year to align with policy. So we're going to make sure we caught it in all of its places. So if you're doing your bedtime meeting, which I'm sure includes the Program of Studies.
Well, you included the whole thing, so we read through every single page.
I know, so you did. And so if you find some wording that's unaligned for the Latin honors, please bring it to my attention because we do need to update it anywhere it appears.
One of the things that I'm aware of, I'm not sure if it's been communicated well to this school, is that at least Milford, and I don't know if Nash was also doing it, they claim to be introducing honors options in their CTE programs. And if, has that been communicated?
We have asked our CTE schools to send us any Program of Studies updates or course offering updates. We don't have them yet. We ask for that as part of our Program of Studies, but we, we can't wait on their timeline to do our Program of Studies, so.
Yeah, the best of my understanding is, it, because I'm on the Advisory Committee in Milford, that's, so I have a bit of an inside track on that. But in my discussions with the director there, I was told specifically that they are piloting it as an honors option for many of their CTE programs. And I think that where we still have waiting involved here, that might change the decision process for some of our students. So I don't know if, I'll, I'll push on the Milford side, but if you have any connection that you want to reach out and specifically ask the question, I would, I, I would appreciate that as well.
Are there any other questions? I think this, it was a great way that you approached it, to have the changes and then to also include the whole Program of Studies in the packet, appreciate that. And, you know, I don't have any other questions. It doesn't look like the significantly major changes, which is good, but the changes that you're making seem good to me. Anyone else? Good job. Thank you very much for taking the time. Yes, Tom, did you have anything else? You lean towards the microphone.
I'm trying to read with my bifocals.
Amanda, I believe that at this point, you're welcome to head on home. I don't think we need you for anything else, right? Okay. Are we releasing principles soon, or are we going to have to go through?
Do you know, have to speak for that? Do you have any involvement in the whole process?
Let's keep them here for that, after that, we'll make good deliberations.
Sure.
Hey, Tim.
He wants the candy, okay, candy, please. Okay, at this point, we'll move on to discussion. The budget discussions, the first thing, I believe that would be, Linda or Andy, I'm not, I'm guessing.
That is me.
Okay, it's you, budget, and then, oh, okay.
Don't give me a heart attack.
Revenue, okay, sorry.
Not a problem.
Well, you know me, I don't know all these words.
In your board packet, I, you were provided both the Excel spreadsheet and our four rounds of new items.
Where do you want us to start?
I'm going to start on the last page of the Excel spreadsheet. While you're getting there, I just want to publicly thank the Budget Committee for all their efforts. As we know, Cindy Van Conant is our representative there. They have done yeoman's work. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank again Kelly Seeley for all her efforts. It's a very thoughtful process. It requires a lot of back and forth and a lot of communication, especially with Budget Committee Chair. So I went on to recognize Dallin Mann for all her efforts and guidance. We've been doing this process for a number of years now, and I think it really gets us to where we have a budget that allows us to move our district forward, but at the same time recognizes the limits from a financial point. So we were provided a guidance number of $25,345,525,000. That guidance number relates to our operating budget. For those not familiar with our process, many of the items that we are required to fund, namely special ed, are considered outside of guidance. And that is a great balancing tool because it allows us to take care of the educational needs of the entire student population while meeting the legally required needs of our special education population. So we came in after our four rounds of cuts with a budget of $25,278,501, which put us $67,024 below guidance. So at this point, we have completed the budget process. We would be just kind of fine-tuning. There are some items that are shared items between multiple districts. So if one district budget could not support that, you may see a change. Very seldom does that ever increase the budget number, but it may decrease it. The only other piece that could potentially happen, if tomorrow a new student moved into the co-op district and we were aware of services that we were going to need to provide, where we haven't approved a budget yet, we would go back to BudCom and, and the budget process and take care of that. So the difference between last year and this year is $889,808, which is a 3.65% increase. We have a HESA contract number of $88,523 that'll appear as a separate warrant item. We do no longer have a contingency. If you recall, last year, we agreed that when we increased the retained fund balance, that we would do away with the contingency. We are present, really working on looking at heating and ventilation and dehumidification processes. So there's a placeholder in there under Energy Expansion Phase One of $163,000, which would be a lease payment that we're going to discuss in a couple moments. The Athletic Trust, again, last year, we made the decision as a legislative body to move away from the format we had had. We still maintain an Athletic Trust, but those are parents' funds that pay for that, so we no longer need an approval process of the legislative body to transfer the money into the Athletic Trust. The concern there was the parents had paid it for athletics. If, it never had got voted down, but if it had, we would have this situation, we'd be returning parents' money back to all taxpayers. And our attorney had recommended clearing that up. So we made that change last year, so you will not see that warrant article either this year. The Maintenance Trust, last year, we had lowered that to try to rein in the budget a little. We are just re-establishing it as our regular amount of $200,000. And we'll go through some of those items when we go through the, the new items sheet. And we're trying to maintain that trust kind of at a stable annual contribution so we're able to stay ahead of maintenance items. And then lastly is our Special Ed Trust, which we established a number of years back. That is designed for that student who moves in next August, was not here for the budget process. And rather than potentially having to reduce line items or items we intended to purchase for the school, we have an option to go into the Special Ed Trust. If we were to do that, we would have a required public hearing. The community would be made aware of why we were accessing the trust, and the board would have to vote approval. We would also notify the Budget Committee of that process as well. Moving into the four rounds, I'd like the board to know that I feel this is a, a very strong budget. It provides us with the ability to move forward academically and meet many of the requests of our school principals. As you can see, this budget contains an increase for our PE teacher, which Mr. Gzone had requested, which I think will pay huge dividends around the whole social-emotional piece as we come out of the pandemic and provide opportunities. We are increasing our math person again to maintain those class sizes that over the last couple of years we have worked so hard to get. And then we are increasing our .8 guidance council by .2 to bring that up to a full-time position again based on the service needs. We had discussed, and it has made it through the four rounds, the need for a social worker or school counselor, depending on what resumes come in and people that we interview. There is a job description provided in your packet that's in draft form. That is a school-year position and would report to the Director of Student Services. So that position has been funded. And then we are including $23,657 for our tech specialist. This year, we were able to add an extra specialist to meet the needs of our tech support, especially since we've basically moved to a one-on-one environment at the high school. We are still doing part of that through ESA grant funds, and it was our desire to phase that in over time to take advantage of those funds. In terms of the shared positions, these are the ones that may still be in a little bit of flux. We have an SAU-directed instructional substitute to be assigned as the need arises, as well as an SAU-directed food service sub. This is similar to what we have done with the nurses, and it's worked out very well. If, if I had to kind of make a choice, I honestly would probably select the food service sub because there's a greater need across the multiple districts. And the directed subs, we do have money in the overall substitute budget that would allow some greater flexibility there. But right now, I'm not anticipating either budgets to be amended. The Hollis budget has also reached guidance, and Brookline has their meeting next week, which will probably be working to their final budgets. One of the things in special education that we're doing.
Before you run out, before you move on from the personnel.
Sure.
That tech specialist, .5, is that? That tech specialist .5, is that, is there another .5? Is that a full-time position?
Yes, half is funded through the operating budget and half is through the ESA grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The, moving to special ed, we have what is called a NECC program at the middle school. That is a program that is a self-contained program that has allowed us to service students in district. That program is moving over to the high school as it's aging with the population. So you see us budgeting just additional days for PARRIs because the PARRIs are going to go from 180 to 210 because it's a year-round ESY program. We're very excited about that. It'll bring some further efficiencies. There'll be a little bit of, I'll say, fine tuning at the high school, which will allow us to, I think, better serve our population and expand our bandwidth so that if a student was to arrive in August and needed that type of programming, there is a greater probability that the student would be in district.
Were those monies in the middle school budget last year?
Some of the PARRI monies were in there for NECC. Some of those PARRIs will need to be, be maintained because there are students coming out of the elementary level that will need PARRIs at the middle school. So that's why you're seeing the increase to the high school.
So we're basically picking up some PARRIs in the color.
Correct, you know. And again, it looks like it's the high school, but it's actually a backfill. And hopefully, with the contracts we will be approving, we can secure those positions. PARRIs the toughest position we have to fill right now. Right behind that would be custodians, and then probably food service, and then teaching staff. The state has changed the requirements around the ESOL, English as a Second Language, which further limits the number of students and limits the number of students that a person can service, while expanding the number of required minutes that we must service a student.
Same number of people.
So as a result, we are going to have a position for ESOL, which will be shared with the Hollis School District to address those needs. Right now, there are students in the Hollis School District that will be moving to the middle school, so this will be a kind of a seamless shift. And again, that will be a difficult position to fill.
Has that been characterized as an unfunded mandate?
It would absolutely be an unfunded mandate. Yep. In terms of the, the academics, I'm very excited about this. As you know, many of you, when I first started, this was a column that oftentimes we had to go in and make adjustments to and reduce. But between Rick's work years back and now Tim's work and working with Kelly and Linda, we have a very refined textbook cycle. Very seldom will we be surprised about any purchases, and therefore, we're able to maintain a stable level type of academic funding every year. So there are just some wonderful pieces in there. We're updating our sewing machines in, in the fax room. We're finishing up the final repairs on our pianos and things like that for those students who have their talents in the arts. We're looking at my French lab. We have some texts there. You will see social studies textbooks at the middle school gone down to zero. We had been for a number of years anticipating changes to the social studies curriculum. That is no longer happening.
Oh.
The, the state, after three years, has decided there will not be changes. So we, we are going to take the time and further discuss because with the new civics requirement and some other things that are going on, just to make sure that, that the curriculum is exactly where we want it and not just based to the state standards. There's some kiln repair there, some classroom chairs. We haven't done a lot in those areas. And then service contract around our tech machines. Again, that's a kudos to Linda and Kelly getting us on a regular maintenance cycle for those machines, which not only important for the curriculum side of it, but also from the safety and insurance side of it as well. They're regularly inspected and we're able to watch that. Replacement of computer equipment. We maintain our regular staff laptop turnovers, so you basically have a laptop, a laptop three or four years and it's turned over. We are replacing some projectors again on a cycle. I was sorry I missed a discussion on the Red Cat audio systems, but it is something that is becoming the norm for students. And as we have more and more students who have those requirements in their 404 plans or IEP plans, it makes sense just to start to move that across the district. You see in there a interactive flat panel math. This is the most updated smart board projector system on the market. It's something that we are bringing in. We have identified an instructor that we know utilizes their present board extensively and really get us an understanding because as we're going to talk about in facilities in a little while, there is kind of a vision emerging around technology, and this is kind of like a pilot to determine the, the best models for our students. We're also increasing our, I shouldn't say increasing, we're updating a number of our access points. Over time, those wireless access points need to be updated throughout the building. We are excited. We potentially could have our own facilities truck. I can't tell you the number of times we've had to rent a U-Haul to bring the chairs from the high school to the middle school, back to the high school, or get the tables for graduation and all of those things. This year, it became front and center because Lance would bring in his own trailer from home. And you'd see him driving into the parking lot, and all of a sudden, you started to realize the number of days that we didn't have something that we could utilize. We also will discuss the potential to be able to do, well, I'll say minimal plowing, but occasionally, we need to move some snow, and we may put a plow in that truck as well. That has not been decided. So you see that truck split between the middle school and the high school. It's also allocated in our other budgets as well, so it's a shared piece. In terms of the safety issues, there are two things where rekeying.
Middle school doesn't get the trailer.
Pardon?
Middle school doesn't get the trailers, apparently.
They don't get the trailer, no. They only get the truck. Patrick's on a new exercise program. We thought this would help him to move the tables and the chairs. At the high school, we're going to rekey. We haven't done that for a number of years, and it's just a very proactive measure. And it, and it, we have too many keys for too many different type locks, and it can create some problems. There are also, in the budget at both schools, bollards. Those are your cement poles so that nobody could drive through the exit. We'll be working with both fire and police to make sure those are placed appropriately because fire still has to get in, and we're hoping to not make them just a piece of concrete. You may see at Target or some of your stores, different things that look kind of pleasant, flower pots, those things, but they're really there as bollards. So we're going to look at that. In athletics, it's time for a new wrestling mat and a final set of volleyball poles. I want to commend Brian and Ron, as well as our coaching staff. They have really got us on a very good cycle for equipment and uniforms and that. They work extensively with the athletic trust and get the assistance of our booster clubs at times, and we've become a very solid athletic program, providing for the needs of our students in a very, I'd say, economical fashion.
What does "final set" mean?
We needed a set at the high school, and we needed a set at the middle school, so we phased them over time.
Okay, so it will, the cycle will start up again, though?
In a number of years because the, it's not like where, we do kind of have a hand-me-down system, so the elite set goes to the varsity team. There's another practice set so that you can use both sides of the main gym. There's a set here, and those get rotated through, so the oldest set is discarded and the new varsity set will come in, and that, well, that's what we mean by the final set. And then it'll probably be, I would say, probably three years where we probably start the cycle again. In terms of the, the paving, we allocated $90,000, which has made it through the budget, to look at the turf field, adding a parking lot, which was in the original scheme, as well as to do something with lighting. What we did learn this fall is we have insufficient lighting where we have a cello. So we're going to look at those. So those are packaged together, and Kelly and Lance will do some extensive work and, you know, once the budget is passed to make those things materialize. We have a storage container for tables and chairs. That will allow us to stop renting tables and chairs.
I suggested on the lighting, you specified that it's parking lot lighting so that people don't think we're adding more lights to the turf field. I thought.
Got it. Good point.
It's really lighting on the pathways and the, yeah.
Yes, and we'd like to potentially do something, so if you parked up back but were stuck in the baseball lot because that's the spot that was open, that there's at least enough lighting that you can make it down and back using spotlights or something of that. So I would make that change. Great suggestion. We are redoing the countertops in fax, and the AC and electric in the computer science rooms needs to be upgraded for the sake of the computers. In terms of the middle school, we're on three, phase three of the window replacement. Then the driveway section here at the middle school also has a paving component for $20,000. And then we will be doing the, the base of the library and the ramp, the retile of those areas. And that takes us to the warrant articles.
Where is the paving in the middle school?
If you go down to the.
No, I see it, but where are we doing it? Here.
Oh, is the area, there's an area out in the back section, am I correct, Patrick? Where the buses come around?
Yep, I think, and then the main entrance as well.
Oh, just redoing it.
Yes.
Oh, I see. I didn't know if you were adding.
So coming, coming up next to the Farley Building?
Wouldn't be next, wouldn't be next to the Farley Building because that's only a right-of-way for us. We don't own that.
When I say right, I'm talking about to the left of the Farley Building, but go up that, like where we, where we come in.
Where you come in.
Yeah.
That is, we'll do some patching and pieces there, and then we'll do some work in the front, and then there's a significant piece in the back. The significant piece in the back was when Tim was at the, the middle school, I believe, was in last year's budget and didn't make it through.
Is that over near, is that the unpaved area now, or is it paving, repaved?
It's repaving paved area. We are, have had a little bit of discussions with the town just on, you know, they allow us to do the maintenance of the bus loop, but we've stayed away from anything permanent because we don't know what the status ultimately will be of the Farley Building.
And we still, we never resolved the ownership of the land, did we?
The, we, we still share, I would say, a small section that sometimes is debated. And then we share multiple right-of-ways that we both need to access different things on the property, water and those things. But we have a very positive relationship, and it's working well. Going to the warrant articles, just so you have an idea, we would be looking at the $25,278,502 is the operating budget, the HESA article that I spoke about, the SAU assessment for $1,070,947, the phase one expansion, which I will get to after I take questions on this, the maintenance trust, and the special ed trust. The special ed trust, just so the board knows, is at $205,000 right now, which would be, give us a total warrant of $26,825,972. And like I said, I don't think there'll be much in the way of adjustments, but there may be some. In terms of.
What's the other column for, the one that says "final"? Is that just a placeholder?
That was the numbers from the prior year, like the HESA number last year was 117, okay?
I see the heading on the previous page.
Okay. The maintenance trust is presently $99,625 as the beginning balance. We're looking for the voters to approve adding $200,000 to that. We would be doing Hollis Brookline High School paving from 122 to the new, where we stopped last year. So we'd be going to that, that section, and that's over and above the paving for the turf field. The roof section one, which is actually phase seven for us. We have made tremendous strides, and I've almost finished all our roofing. That section will be $70,000, and again, kudos to Kelly on that because when we started, oh, probably six or seven years ago with this roofing sections, it seemed like a monumental task, and we're just about finished with it. And the nice part is, by doing it this way, rather than potentially bonding it, we, we never have this massive bill due. You know, we'll, you know, we'll be, have a number of years off from roofing, and then we'll get back to, into a regular cycle again. And then we have, the middle school needs some HVAC upgrades at the tune of $60,000. So that would be what we would be spending the $200,000 on and giving us a balance of $99,625.
Andy, do you view those three items, the paving, the roof, and HVAC as optional?
The roof, I don't think is optional. I think if we, you know, as we discuss facilities in a minute, if you said to me you wanted to do one large facility piece in a couple of years as enrollment grows.
That's not where I'm going with it.
Okay, if, but I don't know if I would say they're optional.
Because you have, by putting it as a separate warrant, you run the risk that the warrant is voted no, and then you don't get the money for those. Where, where we're $60-some-odd-thousand under guidance, why not put the have-to-dos in the budget so that you've got those things authorized as line items? Because if they vote no on the warrant article and it doesn't pass, my understanding is they're effectively saying, no, you can't spend money on that.
I, I will, I don't know if I totally agree with your decision, but at the same time, I'll take that back to Kelly and to the budget committee because to your point, you know, if, if push came to shove and we passed the budget.
But not the maintenance.
But not the maintenance trust, I would probably recommend that we do the roof phase seven and not the lighting and the parking at the field. Because we, you know, I think, as we all know, if you don't take care of the roof of your house, everything else starts to go.
I'd just say, if, if these are things that you feel are must-dos, I'd rather see them in the budget where you have the ability to move monies around rather than have it unfunded.
Yep.
That's, that's me.
Yep. No, I will take that back to vote.
Well, I don't, does it.
No, I actually agree on the roof piece. Like if the roof is, if that's, and we're at 67 under and the roof is 70, is that right? Or did I read that wrong?
No, you read it correctly.
So I mean, to me, that seems like a, something that could be in the budget since it is, I mean, you really have done a great job getting that roof done, and it would be a shame to not get it finished in the timeframe that you wanted it to be.
No, I will definitely take that back. I think one of the pluses this year is that we're, I'll say, almost finalized relatively early. And I think that's because of the process. Well, we, we moved up our calendar to make life easier at the SAU, so we start our internal working in, in July. So, you know, that's, that's one of the differences, but it's, it's a, it's an easier period for our administration and business office to have those big-picture discussions before we have to get down to the nitty-gritty. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes, also along with the budget, talking about the sheet that I passed out to you. This is, and I, and I want to give him credit to Lance and the position of Facilities Maintenance Director because this is a document that we would have gotten to eventually, me and Kelly, myself, and Linda, but having the extra person that can go out and meet with the contractors and go, you know, machine by machine and have the expertise and know what they're talking about has really helped us to do this process. And tonight, this is just kind of giving you information to bring back to you again in, in January as we get closer to finalizing warrant articles. So in the left-hand column, you have the year that the, the piece of equipment was purchased. And the vast majority of that was '96, a couple in '98, a couple in 2000. So as you can see, we're starting to use, get to the end of useful life. The, the tag is something that Lance has a better understanding of. It's more in the realm of the facilities. The, the tag is something that Lance has a better understanding of, it's more in the realm of the facility world. But then he put in the, what I call the, the world for me, the, the non-facilities person. In terms of what does the machine do? So, you know, we have a 1996 HVAC one, which is the first floor, south administration and the main office and the AC that's existing. And then he goes through basically every machine. In terms of the next column, you're looking at your, your total in terms of dollars of what those machines are valued at. And this is something I learned in the.
Is that replacement cost?
This is, yes, to put the new one in. So that 1996 HVAC one has a cost of replacement of $357,021.50. We're talking about approximately 12 to 15 pieces of equipment. That is your ventilation and HVAC systems, which is the nucleus of your school, which is about, in many cases, machines that are 20 years plus. So if we were to approach this as a one-time lump sum item, do all the equipment, it would be $5,410,825.20. Obviously, like the roofs, I believe there's a logical way to approach this and that's what we're looking at. We're presently working with both an architectural firm as well as a energy resource firm. And we have information in the packet that we're going to discuss. And this was in preparation for an enrollment growth that we're already seeing at the elementary. The Brookline School District is discussing a renovation project and potential bond or lease item for this year's budget. To make this school's ADA compliant, but at the same time, that allows us to gain classroom spaces to meet the incoming enrollment. Brookline continues to grow and there continues to be houses on the market on a regular basis. On the far right, option one, if you would just consider doing the 1996 units only and looking at approximation, Kelly provided us with a 15-year lease payment to do all the 1996 items, it would be $3,747,884. Or a 15-year lease payment of $313,740. Option two is all the non-AC units, okay? So that means that we're maintaining the current AC units, replacing the old ones with dehumidification slash AC. And that's more what you're doing in a, a commercial building is dehumidifying it, not necessarily air conditioning it. So it's not like you're going in and setting your home air conditioner because you want the temperature here. What you're looking to do is in a large commercial building is dehumidify, which brings the overall conditions and temperatures down. That would be a very expensive piece at $5,410,825,000 for a 15-year lease payment of $452,947. Option three, which is the third floor only, would be the start of a phased-in approach, which may be even further condensed from a financial point of view. The third floor is our worst floor by far. The conditions up there during spring and fall can be very difficult on students. I think it was just made more clear because of the pandemic. The ventilation is good, it meets all the codes, there's nothing wrong with it. But it, it is a system that is almost 30 years old and is, needs to be looked at. So the, to do that phase would be $1,929,451 or a 15-year lease payment of $161,516. The, also, we would need to do some electrical upgrades. We have a placeholder there of $300,000, but we don't know that yet. You'll get further information, but we wanted to make sure there was a placeholder. Why I wanted to provide you with the whole chart is we have the ability to pick and choose. From the items on the left, Lance is going to be working with Kelly and our consultant to kind of formulate other options. But from a consultant point of view, we want to get this on the table now. And we may or may not have a warrant article depending on what the board chooses. Kelly put in the placeholder of $163,000, just so that as we go through the process, it doesn't appear out of nowhere at the end of the process. To talk.
And that number would be.
Just a quick question for you.
Sure.
Is it, is the, is characterizing them as a 15-year lease accurate in that at the end of 15 years, we no longer own them?
No, characterizing it as a lease simply means.
Is it a lease to own?
It's a lease to own, it's just our mechanism of paying for it. And it's a very popular mechanism for equipment.
Oh, I understand, it's just that we are clearly getting 25 years out of, of these things. And I didn't realize if, if at the end of 15 years, they come back and say, okay, do you want a new lease for five or 10 more years on this equipment? Do you want to upgrade? But meaning that 15 years.
It's paid.
We just got to start paying a whole new sequence. At 15 years, we would own it and no longer have payments.
That is correct. That is absolutely correct.
And the 163 is basically a placeholder because that's the 15-year lease for the third year, floor only.
Correct, because we're looking at this when we saw the, the numbers, knowing what's potentially has to happen in Brookline for their piece. Some discussions we've had with the Hollis Budcom. At some point, I'm going to have to balance out all the requests from a tax point of view and.
But our third floor is, is in need of something.
Correct. I, I think it's, we, we are in need of something in terms of HVAC. My recommendation to get the biggest bang for our buck in the immediate future is to begin with the third floor. That's your science classrooms, there's an awful lot of experiments. They are using bunsen burners and things that add heat and all of those things. So it, it just makes sense.
If, if you, does the lease option give you the ability to stop it partway through?
At any point, you could opt to pay the lease off.
You have to pay the full amount?
Yes.
Because what I'm wondering is, and then you may know more about this from Hollis, but would this equipment be compatible with a major overhaul of the way that the building is powered?
You could, you could make the decision after this equipment was in, that you wanted to go to solar and be able to adapt the new equipment to solar.
Okay.
Because that's one thing.
That's what Hollis is doing.
Hollis is using solar on the roof. If we were to look at solar here, if you know where the turf field is, if I'm standing in the bleachers, to the left of the turf field is another large parcel of district, co-op district land. That may be potential for a, a solar field, you know, down the road. And in Hollis, I believe it's about 85% of all our electrical use is through the solar system. And there are times where we're actually getting credits because of the amount of electricity that we're generating. There are also, just so you know where the industry is going, they are now working on batteries that would be able to harness that power. And then you could potentially power your bus fleet off of the extra solar as they move to electric buses. So there's, there's a lot going on. And again, we have an unbelievable community group in Hollis and Brookline with regards to energy efficiency. And they have worked with the Hollis district, have spoken at the Hollis Budcom and have offered and started to offer more and more solutions looking at the co-op. Also in your packet.
Wait, just one second. Are there any questions on the budget before we move forward? Because we, we talked a lot about the facilities, but any questions about the budget or the budget process? I kept Tim and Patrick here just in case we had any questions for them. I mean, this is sort of like we're getting down to the wire. I just wanted to make sure that you've been able to, I mean, the, the process started with round one, it was started a while ago. But you feel comfortable that your buildings and your needs are going to be met through this budget? That's great. So at that, at this point, unless you feel like they need to be present for the facilities discussion? Because that's a lot of their spaces, but you don't think you'll be able to answer questions on that?
I can answer questions and, and my comfort level is that this is a, a project that we're looking at.
Okay.
But we're not implementing, so there's going to be plenty of time for discussion. Because one of the goals in, in this process was to do a lot of the legwork, really over multiple years. So that when we went to go sell a potential renovation.
Right, okay.
It wouldn't be a surprise. So there'll be plenty of opportunities and I'm sure they would love to.
To grill them on that. So you guys can go home, basically. I'm releasing you. I just wanted you to stay through the budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for everything, guys. Yeah, okay. Yep, as long as we still have a forum, we're good. So also for Dawn's notes, Beth is going to be leaving at 7:41.
So also in your packet, and this is where I will thank Tim and Patrick. As part of this energy piece and knowing enrollment was growing or potentially going to grow, we are working also with Banwell Architects.
When you say it's in our packet, what are we, where are you going with it?
It's the, so you're moving on to the facilities and educational activity, right? So are we skipping the SAU job description thing and you just basically.
I was going to finish this and then go back to the SAU.
It's just, you know, the agenda's like this, Andy, just saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct, corrected.
It's okay. You can skip it, that's fine. We'll, we'll go back and around. It's all part of discussion.
In terms of the architectural firm, Banwell is the company that we worked with a few years ago when we looked at the STEM project at the high school. What we did, because we know that if enrollment projections materialize, we're going to be under a space crunch at both the middle school and ultimately the high school. That space crunch will probably be in the neighborhood of somewhere, you know, three to five classrooms. So what they do as an architectural firm is they come in and they interview Tim and they interview Patrick and talk to us at the SAU. And they, they walk around the building and they start to get a sense of what we need from an educational space. So the middle school summary is provided in your packet. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but they, they do identify the, the town land versus the school land. And it's a shared thing and I believe we should address that. They, they feel that there's definitely a need for additional classrooms. And they want to modernize this space. They look at this space and say it's a massive library space. But at the same time, they think it can be very, better utilized to meet what will become the new educational needs. And I think it kind of ties into, I think it was the last meeting where Patrick brought forth the new computer project of the app and how everything is changing. And we, we need to look at what we're doing to meet those needs. Part of this would also benefit our thriving robotics program, both here and at the high school. We would look at the old family and consumer science pieces that we presently utilize for special ed services by updating those facilities. Again, we give greater opportunities for those students who need social skills and life skills as opposed to just strictly academics and the ability to keep them in-house. You should be aware, we have, I believe it's 16 children in preschools, three and four years old. And those students at some point are coming to the co-op. And their needs will drive us to either make some of these changes or result in us having to outplace some children. And I just, for the community, not so much for the board, but an outplacement is going to probably be in the neighborhood of between 200 and 400,000 per year per child. So, you know, one of the reasons in Hollis and Brookline we've put that programming in is because from three to 21 is, is quite a few years. At a half a million dollars a year, one child through the life of their programming could run $9 million. And that's a mandated program. I know some people disagree with the program, but it's the law. So we really don't have much wiggle room on that. So you see the highlights of mechanical, electrical, and this will be in the minutes so people at home can start to catch up and kind of get involved with this. The high school summary, the biggest thing there is a need for four additional classrooms, which we've talked about many times. And the piece they're looking at is the cafeteria.
Really?
Our cafeteria.
That's shocking.
Yeah. And in a very quick, hand-drawn couple of minutes like architects can do and we can't sometimes even think of, looking at that space is becoming more, the current cafeteria more of a STEM-focused space. And then a brand-new cafeteria building off of that. So when we look at things like our robotics competitions and things, those students would have easy access to a space to do their large field projects that they need. And again, this is not for this March. This is probably at the earliest next March, but it could very likely be two years from now. But it's something that we need to look at and it, and it does relate us back to, you know, lighting, air quality, boilers, those type of things. So I just wanted to get it on your radar. My plan, because I, I'm personally more of a visual person than just words on paper, is probably to bring you in the January timeframe, kind of what I'll call some first drawings. So you can now see what this space might become, what the space down the other end of the building would look like as we take that over. And then what the high school would potentially look at. So a lot of work to go, but the nice part is, this is what I'll say proactive work, not reactive. So it gives us some time and it gives us some opportunity to discuss things. And we may even see, you know, if the economy were to, to kind of slow down a little, moderate, some of these prices may come down. Because these are based on current contractual prices. And just to give you an example, if you saw the Hollis meeting, we had allocated about $15,000 to take out the tub and do an entryway.
In your building.
In, in the SAU building. And that number has now grown to 34,000 to, to make that happen in the span of last year's budget, budget cycle to now. So the, the costs are definitely escalating. At the Hollis Budcom last night, they suggested to Kelly that we look at a potential bond this year for some of the maintenance items because they still have further maintenance to do and maybe want to take advantage of some relatively cheap money from a borrowing standpoint. So there's, there's an awful lot going on. All of it's very exciting and we're looking forward to that. Are there any questions that I can answer tonight in preparation for January? I'd be happy to do that.
I don't know, do you generally go over the enrollment projections? I mean, I know you handed them to us. Would think that the public would kind of want to see those, that data in order to have an understanding of where you're coming from. But they haven't been in a packet. You handed them to us.
That's correct. I can, they are posted.
Are they posted? Okay.
I believe. Check on that. I don't know.
Yeah, they should be posted.
But I, and again, I get blurred sometimes because we've done extensive work with it in Brookline. Because I've spoken to the Brookline Planning Board.
Yeah.
As well as the Finance Committee, because it's really, it's front and center for them. You know, and they're, they're looking at some building ordinances and growth management regulations just because of the, I don't think we would have anticipated this two years ago with the number. And it's really interesting now because our family dynamics are changing slightly. I would say my first four or five years, when somebody moved in, they had their first or oldest going to high school and maybe one or two children on, on the way. Now we're seeing an influx of their oldest is going to kindergarten. So it's just a dynamic change.
Younger families are moving in.
Much more younger families.
So that's all I would say is from an agenda building perspective, to make sure that we've got some, a little space in the agenda to put the, to talk about the projections specifically.
Excellent.
Other than that, that was a lot of information and well-presented. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I do want to go to the, also in discussion, the proposed compliance and communications specialist. What I did is I have made some changes. I have underlined those changes so that everybody would be able to see them. The biggest change actually came as a suggestion from Mike Harris. Mike serves on the SAU Subcommittee for the Budget, as well as a longtime member of the Hollis Budget Committee. And in prior years was a member of the school boards. And when I went through the position with the SAU Subcommittee. Mike felt that I was not placing enough emphasis on compliance when I went through the number of things that were required for the job. And he felt the focus had to be on compliance because that's what we need. And we need that whether it's COVID or non-COVID. Communications will help us to get the message out on all the great things that happen in our district. Communications will help us to further meet the needs of other organizations that we work with. But if you asked Gina and I, one thing that would need to happen to alleviate some tasks from us is the compliance. So I changed in the job title, under qualifications, I had compliance, communication, clerical and computer experience preferred. Adding the word compliance there. Getting down to general duties. Assist with the completion of all annual Department of Education, state and federal required surveys. Some examples of those, we're required to do a homeschool count, a teacher attainment and salary surveys. Board membership surveys, civil rights data collection, et cetera. Those are mandatory every year. The person would assist with the writing of compliance and communication policies and procedures. We send out a number of memos yearly from mainly the business office around our hourly wages and workers. And how we deal with those issues. Letter A is a change. They would work with the Assistant Superintendent to communicate and execute general assurances related to all state and federal grants. One of the things that sometimes people forget that we function as HB1 community. But from a legal standpoint, we are the SAU, we're Hollis, we're Brookline, and we're the co-op. And each of our grants has to be done from that point of view. And because we are four separate entities, we don't necessarily get the same reader. So we submit, Gina submits the Title II grant for Hollis, Brookline, and the SAU. Two of those go to Tom, one of those goes to Holly. And they're basically identical, except Holly sends it back, all approved, all set, done. Tom sends it back with 12 different questions.
No way!
Who the fuck did?
Who the, who the fuck did? You know? I don't know how I picked those.
It's perfect though. It's so good.
And again, it's, as Gina will, she can tell you, it's very frustrating because it's the identical allocation of money. Where looking to do the same thing with reading and writing and math programs. But because there are multiple people, those assurances and the grants require extensive hours before we're able to spend a penny. So that would be a great assistance and it's, if you can think about a survey, we have one. And again, Tom mentioned it earlier, these are a lot of items that were passed with good intentions. But do have costs because they're man-hours. You know, I'll give you one which I think was a great intention, criminal backgrounds. Years ago, your HR director or somebody else could do criminal backgrounds. For a number of years, I was the only person allowed in the district to see a criminal background. So that means the stack comes in, I have to go through them. Sometimes I have to make phone calls and sort through issues and meet with people. And then ultimately I have to say to HR, they can volunteer or they can be employed in the district. They just recently made a law change that allows superintendents to have people to assist with that. So Gina is now an official reader of that, but, but.
She's so lucky.
She's so lucky. But again, when we made the conscious decision to backroom brown check volunteers. You know, we added a significant number of people. But these are people who are going to be in our buildings for long periods of times, sometimes unsupervised. So I'm very comfortable with it, but a well-intentioned policy by the state morphed into an extensive piece of work at the SAU. And that seems to continue to happen with different things. Like, again, I'm not opposed to the civics exam. I think every child should know civics. But the state doesn't take into account that somebody has to correct them all. So we're now adding another assessment for a teacher to correct. Then somebody has to compile them all. And then somebody has to submit so that a child can now graduate. So again, nothing wrong with the procedure. But all of those pieces incur time and time incurs expenses. Also, this person will meet regularly with the Director of Technology to assist with compliance requirements. An example of that is E-rate funding. And then the last piece we added assists with the coordination, coordination of the informations and documents for the annual town reports. So we will be discussing our position more at the SAU public hearing and budget discussion that's coming up. It's really the only increase to the SAU budget. Everything else in the SAU budget would be there in the adjusted budget. So it's really the only piece that is a new thing. And I think when we look at it from the compliance standpoint, I think it will pay for itself in time, in terms of freeing up. And I'll use Gina as an example, her time to focus more on curriculum and pieces. And like when Amanda says tonight that we hit a crunch time with the program of studies, that's a reality.
Yeah.
It's not the high school's fault, it's not Gina's fault. Just between COVID and everything else is going on, trying to find an open meeting slot is not as easy as it was pre-COVID.
Do you think that the changes in the description, duties, in any way alter your anticipated pay scale for the position?
I don't. I'm very comfortable with that. There is a, and I'm going to be reaching out to a community member that was provided to me by board members. Who has recently retired, excuse me.
Retired.
Recently retired. And that was his field of expertise. So he is, I think, willing to volunteer his time to assist us if we have somebody who has to grow in that position. So we're very excited about that and I'll be reaching out to him. And again, that's one of the strengths that we've been able to utilize is the talents that our community has, both now and for those members who have retired. Any other questions on the job description? I think that takes me through discussion.
It was all you. It was a lot, huh? Good job. Thank you. I mean, I think it sounds, it sounds like a lot. I hope that person can do all those things. That'd be great.
Well, I think, I would also want the board to think of it kind of as a triangle. Because Gina and I envisioned this person being a separate entity with specific duties. But at the same time, also somebody who can support some of the pieces that will come onto our plates that weren't anticipated. And would work together as a, kind of a triangle to accomplish our tasks.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thanks so much. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I guess the only question I have is the reporting structure. Is, is that going to be as much of a burden as it is a relief by having to now supervise that area?
I think just like with any new position in the beginning, it should start off as somewhat of a burden. And then with the right person selected, within a year's timeframe, we should be able to see a number of the tasks. Because they're very repetitive from year to year. We kind of run on a cycle, being done independently. If we do the right mentoring.
So if this gets approved, gets put on.
The budget.
The budget. Budget gets approved, the intention would be to have someone onboard to start July 1?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you know of other districts that have found people to fill this type of role?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So they exist.
Yes, they do.
Like, they're not a unicorn. I like to find things that are really out there.
Just, you know, a lot of our job descriptions, pieces of it came from districts that already had people in place.
Great.
And they were good enough to share. And then Gina and myself and Kerry sat down and kind of tailored it to Hollis, Brookline.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move right on to deliberations. The first deliberative item is to see what action the board will take regarding the approval of the suicide prevention plan presented in October. So I'd like to have a motion to approve the suicide prevention plan as presented. Moved by Tom. I need a second. Seconded by Kate, I guess. She beat you, Krista. Heard her and saw you at the same time. Are there any comments or questions? We got a very thorough presentation in October on this. And this is the plan.
Has anything changed since it was presented then?
No changes. Okay, are we ready to vote? Are you good, Tom? One sec. That's it.
Are we approving it and are we approving it and adopting or just approving?
I think it's a plan that needs to be approved. It's not a policy.
Okay.
So it's, when you approve this, it is adopted.
It's not, there's no readings on this, okay?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? No opposed. 4-0-0 motion carries. Okay. The next is to see what action the board will take regarding the acceptance of E-rate funding for computers. So I'm going to read the motion that we need, we need a motion to approve the acceptance and expenditure of E-rate grant funding in the amount of $51,480 to be utilized for the purchase of technology. Sorry. I read that kind of fine. I need a motion.
This is not, this is, this isn't in the packet. There's nothing in the packet. Is there?
No, this was, we went over this.
We had been.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that I'm not missing.
No, it was in the packet and then we delayed it. And then I forgot to actually put, reinsert.
So I moved, so the motion is a move to approve or accept?
Okay, the motion is to approve the acceptance and expenditure of, that's what Dawn, that's what Dawn wrote. Tom, I need a second. Krista, are there any questions on this?
This is separate then from the donation of computers.
That's correct.
Right, we had the donation, we accepted it.
This is a purchase.
This is a, we see grant funding to specifically purchase Chromebooks that come with a three-year warranty and all the.
So this is, this is like, this is to support the one-to-one?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? All those in favor, 4-0-0. Okay. All right. So I'm going to need a motion where the next, our next item is to see what action we'll take regarding Policy JLDBB, suicide prevention. This would be third reading and adopt. So I need a motion to accept the third reading and adopt Policy JLDBB, suicide prevention.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Kate. Again, I don't believe there are any changes, are there Gina? No, no changes to this policy. We reviewed it two months ago, so.
Is this after the, is this after the other one?
Any questions, Tom?
I'm just trying to get there.
It's a lot, there's a lot of policy information in there.
But this isn't it. This is the other one.
It's there, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to remind myself which one it is.
Um, it's in.
It's a short one.
Right, okay. So all in favor, 4-0-0, oh, sorry, I'm raising my hand, 4-0-0, that's adopted. And then we have Policy DAF, which is second reading. Gina, should we make this second reading and adopt? I mean, do we have any other changes that you're going to be needing to make into this?
No other changes.
Okay, and this is.
Does this have any changes since first reading?
Was there any changes between first and second?
Do you want to figure out what the motion is?
On DA F5, conflict of interest, we changed his/her to there.
Okay, so just there, just a grammatical change from his/her to there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I couldn't figure out where you said it is.
Oh, DA F5. I can't give you a page number.
DA F5? Oh, I didn't know that DAFs were part of the headings.
Yeah. So I mean, it's basically changing a his/her. So how about we, should we make this to accept, to an adopt?
That'd be lovely.
Yes, can we do that, Tom?
I'm sure we can. We're allowed to.
I know, but are you going to be okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept and adopt, to accept the second reading and adopt.
She likes it to accept second, second reading, waive third reading and adopt.
Okay, so I need a motion to.
So moved.
Accept the second reading, waive the third, and adopt Policy DAF. Moved by Tom, Administration of Federal Grants, seconded by Krista this time. There are no changes. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor, 4-0-0.
Why are you in such a hurry where?
I'm in a hurry. I don't know. It's snowing.
It is now.
It isn't snowing anymore? Okay. Okay, and then this one, we'll, we'll definitely just do second reading on because, what is the motion she's written out here?
Well, this is the confusing part because I thought we were going to do it as one motion to adopt something and rescind the other two, or adopt the.
Oh, right, okay. So we need a motion to.
But if we're just doing second reading, we don't have to do that.
So I need a motion to accept the second reading of Policy ADB, GBEC, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools as amended.
My only question is, is that what it's actually going to be titled? Is it going to be a dual?
It is, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So moved.
Tom, seconded by Kate. And again, this is second reading. Are there any comments on this one?
Just logistically, will it be listed under both in the index? So if someone was going in.
Yeah, we have that concern too.
Will it be listed as GBEC and also be listed, so.
So when we did this a couple of years ago in the Hollis School District. So what we do is we send it to the New Hampshire School Board Association and they, they run our index. They only placed it in ADB. Or in A, I should say. But I didn't really think to ask.
I'm wondering if we can.
If they could put it in both, so I can absolutely reach out and see if they can.
Yeah, because.
Put it in both.
Okay.
Where, where it may be referenced, I'd like to be able to cross-reference it.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, all those in favor, 4-0-0.
Thank you.
So that is it for our deliberations. I need a report out by the process observer.
Before you get there, I just want to clarify that if it's coming back for third and adopt next time.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Can it be phrased as a single motion to approve, adopt, and rescind all one?
Okay, we can, I hope Dawn heard that, but yes.
Did you hear that, Dawn?
I just follow her outline maybe, so. Okay, so we do need a report out.
Okay, are we going to have it non-public?
We are.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, first of all, you went through and ended up wrapping things up well ahead of schedule. Congratulations. But, and that's in light of the fact that we had an unusually long correspondence discussion, which was very helpful. But we were, we benefited from lack of public input. But the net effect was the meeting ran very well, the coverage was extensive, and we had good input from all the presenters. The only comment I will have is we're again slipping back into that rut of having meetings that are primarily about bureaucratic issues and not much about academic. The sole exception is the.
Program of studies.
Program of studies. And it would have been nice if we had a lot more freedom to learn about that. Because I think that, that's the heart of what's going on. I think there's a lot more going on than, than we can glimpse from that discussion. I'll leave it at that.
I think that's a good point. Hopefully instructional practices committees are rolling and we'll have a lot more conversations related to those.
I'm just wondering if there's any way to get into either workshop, get some of these things done in, in your workshops or special, special subsets of meetings. Our meetings are running long, we're over two hours already. But some of these topics are really the bread and butter of what we're here for. You know, you brought up some really good comments about why we're doing these things. And it almost becomes editorial as opposed to functional.
I can, I see your point. I definitely do. Unfortunately, we also have all the other stuff too.
Do we? That's the question. Are we, are we doing things that we don't need to be doing?
No. So we need to go into non-public at this point. Thank you for the process observing. Can you just, what are we, is it A, B, C? Is it all of them?
It would be compensation and reputation.
Okay. So I need a motion that we go into, that the board by roll call go into public, non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-A. pursuant to RSA 91-A colon 3, Part 2, A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee, and also B, C, sorry, the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself. Moved by Tom.
Second.
Second by Krista. Roll call vote starting with Krista.
Krista aye.
Holly aye.
Tom aye.
Kate aye.
Kate aye. So we are now in non-public at.
8:10.
8:10, because of my watch.